Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of January 30th, 2018. First item is a salute to the flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an approval of the agenda?
Make a motion we approve the agenda.
All in favor. We're going to table the minutes of the last meeting?
Sounds good.
Department head, committee chair, updates. We have the Marijuana Committee.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. My name's Richard Nass. I'm chairman of the Acton Marijuana Committee and we're here tonight to deliver our report to the Selectmen and that's what I've just given you.
Can you speak up, please?
I can.
Thank you.
I'll start all over again.
There you go.
Good evening. My name's Richard Nass and I'm here representing the Acton Marijuana Committee. We're here to deliver our report. We were asked to do two things. One, gather information about the commercial marijuana operations and make recommendations about how Acton might proceed. We've met 12 times over the past four months, conducted 19 interviews with folks in Colorado and the state of Washington, looked at a ton of online articles on the commercialization of recreational marijuana and reviewed various state municipal ordinances and zoning documents. We've just given you a pile of paper which includes summaries of each of the interviews we conducted, some of the articles and the zoning use in other jurisdictions. It's all good stuff, but it's a lot to absorb. We would ask if you would please focus on the report, which is really the first 20 pages of Volume One. It's only 20 pages. It's well organized and easy to read, we think. The good news is that we have unanimously agreed with the material in Sections 1 through 6 of that same first 20 pages, which are Pages 1 through 12. Commercial marijuana operation is very contentious, might be the most contentious issue we've had to face in certainly recent times. It's a difficult issue and we've divided on recommendations about what the town should do next. Section 7, which is Pages 13 through 20, present these ideas in majority and minority reports. We do not expect any response or questions from you tonight, but we hope you'll invite us back to answer your questions and help you with your deliberations on what to do next. All the material we deliver tonight, Volumes 1 and 2, are available in an online format, PDF, but it belongs to you and you need to decide when and if to make it available to the public. I've not given it to Jennifer yet, but we can easily do that, so, whenever you say so. Finally, we believe this is a collection of material that is significant and that may be of use to other municipalities. If you agree, we would like to make it available for other towns and local officials. Not quite sure how to do that, but if it's in an online format, it will be fairly easy to do that. I have just a couple of other things. I think all the committee members would like to thank Jerry, who did most of the work here. I can't tell you, he's had access to the technology and knew how to use it that got us in contact with a whole bunch of people in Colorado and Washington, and they were the right people. And he did it in a way so that we could talk to them and they talked to us and was very comfortable gathering information. And he deserves our thanks for that. Without that, it wouldn't have been, it would have been a real surface kind of a gathering of information. And I think, yes, I don't know, there are just, there's at least one other member here.
Two.
Two other, Jerry and Carol, I think is here. Are they?
Mike walked in.
Mike just, okay. So, we basically said to them, if they feel like I'm not representing or have missed something, we hope that you'll give them a chance to speak and add or do whatever they want to do with this. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a lot, it's a lot to look over. I want to thank the committee for the amount of time and commitment they put into all this research and discussions. Thank you.
Yeah, I've read most of the emails as the committee's been going along and I see a lot of them are repeated in here. It's all great information, so, thank you.
Jerry, did you want to say anything? Mike? All set? Was there someone? Who was the other person?
Carol.
Oh, Carol. Hi, hiding. Okay. Thank you.
So, what's the board's instruction with this? Do you want to take one week, two weeks to review it and put it back on so that you can bring them back to decide what's next or?
I think we're going to need a couple of weeks on this one.
Yeah.
So, how about we invite them back in two weeks? Is that good?
Yep.
So, that will be February 13th.
How about three weeks out? Let Jerry's at Dallas.
Three? The 20th? The 20th?
Okay.
Okay. Let's see, old business. We have the old patrol car.
So, we got an email from the, one of the, someone at the Sheriff's Department basically asking if the county manager wanted to know if they could just take the $500 credit off our next bill in March. After speaking with the treasurer, we haven't asked Shapley yet because they need to be able to make their own opinion, but she thought that it would be cleaner if they just cut the check and deposited it. We know what the contract's supposed to be. We know what the amount is. She thought it'd be cleaner if we just requested the paper check now, as we had discussed, but they did make the request, so I wanted to put it out to you guys.
I like the clean version. I like to know that it's recorded as.
Yeah, show it coming in. I think that's the best way.
Rather than coming off the next bill. The next bill's not until the end of March anyway, so.
Yep.
Job description for land use?
So, I passed that out last week. Because of some illnesses in the building, I haven't had a chance to update with all the Selectmen and the staff downstairs, so I'm hoping that we can table that until next week. Ed, remind me to give you a copy of it so that you can make any changes you want.
Thank you.
Flat Ground Road follow-up.
So, I put this on there. I know you guys met with Attorney Lankowski and Mr. Long, so.
And.
In muddy water.
Very muddy water.
Is that what he said?
No, that's what I said.
So, what did he say?
Discussed a bunch of different ways of, well, several different ways of trying to cure this. In 1960, it was closed. Is that the right term?
Yep. Subject to bars and gates.
Right. And then, which, we think that the understanding with that was closed, discontinued, town not having to do with it. But, as you move forward a bunch of years, the interpretation today, closed means closed but still a town road. So, we're just trying to figure out the best way to go. There was a couple of options that we discussed, one of which, putting it out to the town and say, how about, you know, do you feel you want to reverse what was done in 1960? But we have to find out first if that road meets any of the criteria of a town road, one of the different classes. So, that's kind of where we are right now. So, we need to talk to the road commissioner or whoever would know what class road that would be and how that would fall under a town road. You know, there was another option talked and it was a, it was basically, the way he put it, was a friendly lawsuit. I don't think, I just don't like that idea. The thing is with me, the town in 1960 voted to close it. The town should be the one to vote to re-accept. So, that's kind of how I see it.
Because other than the word "closed," the other word used is discontinued and that wasn't used as more clear meaning, so.
So, that's kind of where we sit. We just, we've got a few more things we've got to find out on it, but that's where I'm leaning towards, and I think.
So, do we want to ask the road commissioner on that side to review the road ordinance and give us an update next week on his thoughts on the road?
That would be good.
And we'll go from there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dennis, did you have anything to add since this was your follow-up? Okay. So, we're moving on to Arnold Murray, the warrant article follow-up.
So, I got this about 10 minutes ago. It's the written response from Brad. I sent him an email that just said, "A local resident turned in the attached proposed warrant article. Please advise if it's legal and any opinion that you have regarding it." Want to read his response?
Okay. So, this is dated today. "In my, dear Jennifer, in my opinion, the citizen's proposed warrant article regarding appropriating funds for storm runoff pollution prevention is legal. Under Title 23, Section 3106 of the main revised statutes, a municipality may appropriate funds to repair a private roadway or bridge to prevent stormwater runoff pollution from reaching a great pond or to protect or restore a great pond in the following criteria if the following criteria are met. The private road is within the watershed of the great pond. The great pond is identified as at risk or under threat by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. The Maine DEP or the Town of Acton determines that the private road is contributing to the degradation of water quality. The repair complies with DEP best management practices and the private road is maintained by a duly organized road association. It is also my opinion that a town may establish a reverse fund for this purpose. Title 30A, Section 5801, which governs reverse funds provide."
Reserve.
Sorry, reserve. Did I say that? Okay, establish a reserved fund. Sorry. "Provides that a municipality may establish a reserve fund for the following accounts: capital improvement account, capital equipment account, credit reserve account, sinking fund account. A reserve fund for the repair of private ways to prevent stormwater runoff pollution would fall into the category of capital improvements. We also consulted the legal department of the Maine Municipal Association for a second opinion and they concur. Therefore, there are no legal impediments preventing the warrant and finance committee and select board from approving the warrant article should they decide to do so. Please let me know if you have any questions." Brad Moore.
So, he did call me right after he sent the email and, you know, just kind of reiterated everything. I think he kind of spells it out there, but it's still your option to decide if you want to put it on the warrant or their option to go by petition if you choose not to, but at the end of the day, it's, it would be up to the people in June.
Okay. Should we vote on that without Kim here or we just?
I mean, it's not, the deadline's not here yet for warrant articles. So, you want to table it, put it off for a week and give her the update and see if you have any questions on it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Murray, all set?
You all set?
So, are we going to do table it for?
For a week to get the other Selectmen a chance to review the, the opinion and just see if the board comes up with any questions in the meantime. Is that what you want to do?
Yep.
Yep.
Road Committee direction, Dennis Long, follow-up.
So, this came from public comment. Guys had told me to pull anything out of there that were direct questions that we, the board needed to answer the next week. So, he had some questions regarding the road ordinance and if the board was going to move forward with those proposed changes. I think he mentioned some financial numbers as well, so.
I met with Kenny last Thursday and I apologize to you at least because when I went to the planning board last Thursday, there wasn't a meeting, so I had that wrong and, but anyway, I talked in length to Kenny about the road ordinance and I believe one of the plans is on the Stagecoach Road. There's a gentleman that wants to divide his land up and the intent of the planning board is to use a Class B, make it, have him put in a Class B road. Normally with the housing developments, they go by the Class A standard and the Class C road, Kenny thought that we should leave that in there and maybe the road committee should look at that a little harder and because the Class A road is with a 50-foot easement, the Class B road is a 34 and the Class C is with a 20. And these, with a 20-foot easement, the town could accept some of these roads with a 20-foot easement, which would do some work on the private roads around the lakes and stuff. But he also thought the road committee should look at this and do some more work on it. And so, I agree with him. He said there was really no reason to go to the planning board because he's the one that really researches this stuff and makes the recommendations to the planning board. So, as far as I'm concerned, and I know it was a vote of the road committee, as far as I'm concerned, we can just table this until the road committee can do some more work and see what else can be done with it, under advice from the road commissioners and Kenny and the Selectmen. If that's all right. The warrant article that we wanted for the $75,000 to start the process, for the assessment engineering, I'm probably not saying this right, but to assess the bridge by an engineer to come up with a plan financially, whether to, whether we should consider replacing the bridge or if the engineer would say it'd be more cost-effective and it'll be fine and we can repair it. Tom Gore made that recommendation because we have to have an engineer do it and not that it, the engineer might probably won't cost $75,000, but it'd give us money to make sure we can do what we need to do and we'll just leave that money, whatever's left over, into a fund to.
I did look in the Calderwood report that David brought to Jennifer. It was much less than $75,000. In fact, row bridge was cheaper than canal and I don't think we're going to need one on canal if Wakefield is doing it.
Right. And this was it. I mean, I didn't know what the number was.
I guess, I have 17 in my head, 17,000?
I think you're right.
Yeah. So, the cover, because you'd have to put it out to bid, so I would think that you'd want something like 25 or something, just because you're going to be checking references and all that stuff there.
And I think that.
So, hopefully that you'll be willing to put that forward.
And I think that, in speaking with Mr. Winchell, that he intends on putting that forward in his own budget. He's going to take care of that article. He planned on submitting it with his regular budget.
Yep.
But, please?
You mean, as part of the operating budget, you mean?
Well, no, I mean, as a special article and can David speak, Elise?
Yeah, well, yeah. Are you finished with the other articles, the other issues?
That was, that was it, wasn't it? Just the two?
Just the two. Okay. Yep.
Yeah, I'm done.
So, okay. So, David can follow up with the.
Did I have that right, David? You were going to have a special warrant article about possibly the town wanted to move forward.
Go to the road, but I watched it and I was concerned about the $100,000 number that was thrown out there. And I had given the proposal to you, which was kind of premature because obviously with the number that came in, it, we're going to have to put it out to bid. So, before we put the cart before the horse, I think what we've got to do is, I know, we got budget season coming up quick on us, whether or not we can, we can get a bid out there. We can call Ben Foster and get three names, send out a bid thing to, they, you know, I've got two. We need a third anyways. We should have anyways. And I don't believe I put in a newspaper or anything that's going to help us out because that's talking against any bridge engineers, I don't believe. So, but what I was going to request was 20 grand. You know, we do have a number, but the thing is, I just hope by him sending in the number that he did, you know, doesn't, you know.
Clue to anybody else.
But, because I didn't expect him to give me that number. I was expecting, I was something there, we can hire him, just go do an evaluation. Then he sent me his whole packet. It was a little overwhelming. So, that wasn't what I was expecting, but what I, what my plan is, is if we can get, put forward 20 grand towards getting a preliminary engineering, getting all the plot plan, all the permanent stuff, you know, see what we're going to need for that, having, you know, whoever the company is. And then, you know, we can move on to voting in money. I don't want to do what we did with the town shed where we voted in money, then we put it out to bid and everybody knew how much we had, you know, because I don't, I think we can go with a couple of different routes, you know, instead of just stockpiling money to something we don't know what we're spending on or we look at it doing a bond or, you know, something like that later on in life, if it comes down to that point. The last bridge engine, bridge report I got, it's not on the red list yet, so we got a little bit of time, you know.
Oh, you got canal?
I got the row. The canal.
Oh, okay. Canal's not done yet.
Talking row bridge, yeah. I'm not talking canal at all.
Yeah, okay.
Because the canal bridge, that's another story. That's something that we're going to wait for New Hampshire to do their thing.
Yep.
And we talked the other day and like I said, with the canal bridge, what's going to happen there is we can't do anything until there's a set of plans. When they get us a set of plans, whether or not, you know, if it comes in the middle of our budget and season or whatever, there's usually money allocated in either a reserve, you know, paving account or whatever, there will be money there to do what they need. It's not a huge job. So, but for right now, the row bridge is my concern and what I'm going to do is I'm going to put forward my budget and I want to put forward a $20,000 article, separate article, okay? That way there, the town could either vote y or n on it. Because I don't want to handcuff my actual budget to that.
Yep.
So.
Perfect. Thank you.
Makes sense.
I want to be very clear that the road committee isn't stuck on any dollar amount. We didn't have access, or I didn't anyway, to this information. And what Mr. Winchell's saying is really the same thing the road committee's saying to put a warrant article in for a certain amount of money and as long as we have enough money to cover it. We need to start on something because this has been going on since 1980 and that's a long time to put something off.
Okay.
And, but I will advise you that you do need to advertise this. You can't just contact certain people. You have to.
We'll take care of that piece of it. We understand how the bid process works.
Yep.
Okay.
I do still want to advertise. I just don't think it's going to do anything.
Yeah, that's why you have me. I'll advertise it, so we're good. We got it.
Honestly, don't think the people around here are going to.
Right. It's no different than like when we do paving or something like that. We will advertise our regular way, but he's right, knowing that no one in Acton or Shapley is going to vote on that. Well, I will make sure all the legal pieces are covered.
Thank you.
Good point, guys.
Okay. Buzzal Road Plowing.
Joe, Joe, Joe. Where's Joe? Nice, Joe. Sorry about that, by the way, again. Got to slap name wrong.
Deorio.
Deorio. So, Buzzal Road, that's, is that you or Scott?
Well, I'll have to take care of it sometime.
Okay, well, you're on the hot seat. Do you mind?
Yeah.
So, just remind the board in short sentences. So.
Short ones.
Short ones, David. Because, so they know the background and they know that Lankowski has said that we're looking for this Farmers Foundation and they know that he's recommending that some sort of survey be done, but why did it stop a couple of years ago?
Probably three, four years ago.
Right.
Yeah. We came into the issue, I'd say three, four years ago and what was happening was the town line is down, partway down the hill, somebody, I didn't do it, but somebody had put that in there. It was a road committee member back in the day.
They put a marker in.
Put a townway marker and that marker was down towards the bottom of the first incline coming off the Y in the road. And what Mr. Mooney was having to do was go down through, go onto the private road, turn around in someone's doyard and come back out. And there was a bunch of this and that, da-da-da-da. And so, we had a road committee, a couple of road committee meetings back in the day and the road committee had come to a conclusion that that marker just didn't make sense to be partway down a road like that. Usual road starts at the beginning or whatever.
Like a road that name would change if it was.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't. It's like East Shore Drive's the same thing. I've got East Shore Drive where you drive down to the end of East Shore Drive, the townway stops at the bottom of a hill. But we would have to drive onto private way, turn around, which I had no issue with, but now I don't have that turnaround there because I put a house there, so now I back all the way up the hill and turn around and back down. But what happened up there was the road committee, we discussed it, this and that. I thought it was kind of silly that our townway stopped at the bottom of a hill with no turnaround, this and that. We looked into, looked, put in a turnaround and we found that the road committee had made a suggestion, suggested to the Selectmen that we stop plowing at the Y because it just didn't make any sense for us to go a couple hundred feet down the hill and back out. So, that was the decision at the time, knowing the rest of it was private road. Well, I mean, people can argue that it's not or whatever. I don't want to get in that argument right now, but, so, we.
We don't know that the townway, that stake that you keep referring to, we don't know that that was accurate to start with.
Nobody knows. You know, I mean, the one on East Shore's the same thing. We don't know. It could, it could be 200 feet up the road, down the road. We don't know.
So, why did it come up? I guess, why did it come up all of a sudden two years ago? Because we stopped plowing the private roads in '05, so.
There was some snow plowing complaints.
In the area.
Don't really want to get into depth on that, but there was some issues with the two, the private and the town merging and that's when it became an issue. And so, you know, and then of course the road committee, you know, came up with that suggestion and, and I also came up with a suggestion that the only way we're going to determine where that is is with a survey. I mean, right now, I could put a post anywhere as a road, say town and the way, doesn't mean it's right. And, you know, the person that put it may have had good intentions, but whether or not they were correct, who knows? So, we thought that because, usually a road starts at an intersection and we figured that was the place to start the road instead of at a couple hundred feet down the hill. And, and the Selectmen at that time voted to do what, well, what Scott's doing. And so, we still clean up the part of that road a little bit, but right now, there's a sign right at the end of it saying, well, it's Buzzal Road, but it's got a blue sign and this and that, you know, with speed limit. So, we, at this point, we didn't think there was an issue with it because I figured it.
So, how much feet are we actually talking of plowing?
I don't know. It's a couple hundred feet down over the hill where the sign used to be.
So, essentially, the board decides, so the board, so, I mean, we could look.
The biggest problem that happened over the years is it's like on Peacock, a lot of these roads was when they were paved, they'd pave down over a section. The part of Buzzal Road used to be maintained by the town. We used to maintain those roads back in the day. So, they would just extend the hot top a little further and a little further before you know you're a couple hundred feet down beyond the intersection and, well, and of course we plowed that because we paved it and, you know, so there's nothing in stone saying you either they're right or we're right or whoever's wrong. It's obviously something there that we're going to have to dig into because this problem will come up next year and the year after.
So, at, at that 100 feet, is it still Buzzal Road or do they call it a different name?
It is Buzzal Road.
Buzzal Road to the bottom there.
Yeah, it's, yeah, Buzzal Road to the bottom hill, then it turns the lakeside.
So, we could either spend, what is the survey? 10,000? What's the survey cost?
I don't know. I mean, that could be pretty extensive because.
It's going to be between, yeah, around 79.
Because you're going to have to really start, if you look at, because we've gone over all the deeds and this and that and they really, truthfully, start right at the beginning of Buzzal Road at the Red Schoolhouse, all the way down through and you're doing footage and this and that.
Okay.
And I think when it was done before, it was done with a vehicle, you know, with a little odometer and this looks good, you know. I'm not sure if that's really how he did it. I doubt they walked it with a walking thing and you could be off, you know, quite a bit with those two.
The way that this board sees it from the conversation that I'm having with them is that if there was nothing of substance that, to have them stop it then, you know, because it makes sense what you're saying that until it's surveyed, nobody's really going to know. But did anybody really know two years ago when, when they stopped plowing 100 feet because it wasn't surveyed then either?
No.
So, that's what they're kind of on the fence about.
And that's why the road committee had made the suggestion to stop plowing at the Y.
Right.
Because we didn't even, because as far as we knew, it was private. We were plowing a private road. We didn't know. But it made sense. Common sense tells you, when you're plowing the plow truck, you go down the bottom hill and you've got to back up a hill, turn around and back down the hill.
So, there's nowhere to turn around down there if he goes 100 feet?
Not unless you went down and turned around. There was a house trailer in there and during the springtime storms, it made a mess. And it was honestly, it was destroying the road, the section they were, you were driving on. You go over there with a five, six yards, seven, eight yards or whatever, he was, put on his truck. It was destroying that section of road, so, you know, it, it's, it's, you can't. that section of road, so, you know, it, it, it's, um, it's can't worms, and, and there's only one way to, to solve the problem, is to get a survey or to, cuz there is measurements in the deeds that will give you that, that spot somewhere, it's gotta be, so, um, I mean, the only other thing you can do is, um, see if there's an easement there, if the town has any sort of easement, put it on the, put it on a warrant, vote on plowing that small section.
That would be less expensive than a survey.
That.
It's less expensive than a survey.
Yeah, but we still have to get the record to show that we have some sort of right over it, you know what I mean? We just can't.
But we know that we're not gonna get that, I mean.
So, um, without making sure there's some sort of right of way, you know, which is right now, I'm kinda misskewed whether or not we need those or not, but, uh, um, but you still have to make sure, we, we gotta know where the town right of way ends, and probably the survey is really gonna be the only way to do that. Other than that, you're just shooting, shooting blanks.
So you're just making a decision just like the other board did two or three years ago.
Exactly.
I mean, I'm, you know what I mean, it's, not to take away from what, you know, what they might've done then, or the information they had in front of them, um, you know, and I hate to even say table it another week, but I'd be interested to pull some of these Row Committee meetings that was discussed in three years ago and let you watch some of them, I mean.
I, I really think that there might be a, a spot where the Row Committee could be very helpful.
If they just, I mean, if, if they just voted, you know, the selectmen just voted to stop, I mean, you have just as much right to do it again, but, in either way, you need a survey, you know, you're never gonna, like he's saying, you're never gonna know who's right or wrong without a survey, but maybe some of those old films meetings could give you a little more information.
You know, I was. Back to the tax records, and you see, you know, the two corner lots there.
And Joe, I mean, he's went through all of those.
You got the two lots there, there should be some sort of property markers, it should show whether or not there's an easement, whether or not the town act and's on that easement or not, I don't know, but there's been so much paperwork brought on that, I, I mean, Bill Gannon came up here, oh, I don't know, quite a while ago, back in the day, and he had every easement on that road, he had all that information, whether or not it should be still up here in town somewhere, and, um, so, um, but that's why, um, that's why Mr. Mooney stopped plowing that section, was because the Row Committee advised the selectmen to go that route, and that's what we did, so that's the only reason.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was on the board when that happened, so, and then, yeah, we did, we went on the recommendation of the Row Committee, and it made sense.
Yeah.
You know, you turn around there, we've got room, and you're not destroying the road any further down, and.
I mean, I'm in the same, same ballpark in East Shore Drive, because I, I, my, my, uh, my, um, turnaround disappeared, and for me to have to back up the hill, it's, it's not fun, so, but luckily, my private truck takes care of the other part of it, so he'll plow that section, and I think that's what the, at the time, we looked at, well, if the person who's plowing could plow that extra two hundred feet, it's not a really big deal, you know, it's the same thing I'm doing, I'm plowing an extra couple hundred feet just because it's convenience, but, um, I do go in later on and take care of that spot, you know, push back if needed, but, uh, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to back up that hill during, during the winter, it's, it's actually dangerous, skies come down through there, you know, whatever, so, is that it?
Yep.
Yes, thank you. So we'll look at the meetings and.
Is that what you wanna do? You said Joe's not gonna be down?
I can, um, I can understand both sides of it, like David was saying, but, um, is it common practice for the town to start plowing halfway down a town road, whereas Buzzle starts at, um, the schoolhouse, and they start plowing to the triangle, but Buzzle Road actually goes another quarter.
I think that's a million dollar question, nobody can agree where the town road, where it, where it starts and ends.
Well, Buzzle, Buzzle Road actually ends right down at the corner of, uh, the junction of Foley Way and Lakeside Drive.
That's somewhere in the town.
Yeah, that's the, that's the problem.
That's the ball, so.
But, see, my thing is, if it doesn't have another name, it, why wouldn't it still be Buzzle? Like, you have the left that goes off to Langley.
Right, the houses on that road are, the mailing address is Buzzle Road.
Yeah. Why wouldn't it still be Buzzle?
Because Buzzle Road was an extension, it was an extension of Buzzle Road at one point, it was a development. Buzzle Road already always existed back in, I, I forget the, the developer, I should know this, we've talked about this a zillion times, but this was an extension beyond as a camp road, okay? We've gone over this numerous times, nobody's been able to come up with a definition, one person will say it's at the bottom of Foley Road, uh, Foley Lane, which, myself, um, if it's gonna be at the bottom of Foley, then why isn't it at the end of the hot top where it was hot top at some point? I mean, eh, where do you stop? Eh, I don't see how they would stop a town road at the bottom of a steep hill, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. We used to plow that all the way to, almost to Pitt, uh, I can't remember, what's the, what's the name of the road? Joe's Road. We plowed just past Joe's Road, that was hot topped by the town back in the day, but there was a lot of roads hot topped back in the day that weren't town roads, it was just common practice that you just, you know, my, my grandfather, or Robbie Hutchins, Robbie Yett, whoever, they would just go spray, spray asphalt all over the place, and, cuz that's what you did, and, um, so, the, the issue with Buzzle Road, what I call Buzzle Road extension, cuz that's what it is, it was an extension after the fact, cuz that, that road was dirt for quite a while back in the day, and then when they built the subdivision, it was from there on. Um, I mean, maybe that's, you know, we, the Row Committee seems to have a lot to do right now, and, um, you know, this is, uh, an issue that keeps coming up every four years, every four years, and at some point, there's only one way to get rid of these issues, is see if there's easements, if the town has legitimate easements. Now, the issue that we had on Buzzle Road down, um, by Foley Road was back in the day when my father was road commissioner, we used to have to plow that, and it sucked, it was bad, so my father wanted to pave the hill, the one that you guys just paved, and a private property owner wouldn't let us do it, cuz he said he owned at the halfway point of that road, so, that's where the issues come, where are the property lines, and with what we know, some of these property lines do come out the halfway, they say they do, but without having the actual layouts and everything else, it, it turned into a quagmire, and then when they discontinued the roads, um, this has just become an issue every year, every three, four years, whatever, um, and the only way you're gonna find out is, I believe, the Row Committee ought to find easements on it, and do, do the work on that, and if they can find easements on it, great, then we put it, we put it on an article and we voted in. If we can't find that we have any right of way over that road, then, um, it's a done deal, and then, you know, it's, it's up to the people on that road to come and give the easements and, and put it back on as an article, but this has been ongoing thing for nine years, that same road.
All right, what's the direction of the board, what do you wanna do?
Sounds like we're gonna look at some older meetings, and I don't know where you would find easements in, um, the road folders, right?
So you wanna see if we can determine if the town has any easements on it, like David said?
Yeah.
Is that something you want us to do? Do you want us to turn it over to the Row Committee?
Give it to the Row Committee.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, 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 I mean, it's a perfect job for them.
Yeah.
Are we, are you able, I know, have they scheduled another Row Committee meeting?
No, they haven't scheduled the meeting.
So when they do, David, will you do your best to try to be there to reiterate what the board's encouraging you to do?
Okay.
Are you guys all set? Okay. New business, we're Planning Board alternate.
All right, so today was the deadline for the alternate, uh, position that we had advertised, so we have two alternates, um, we have what we're calling a, a regular alternate and a senior alternate, um, Joyce was the regular, so she's getting moved up to the senior, so you have a, um, a new appointment for her, and we had, um, just one person interested, he does have, he did send over his, um, bio, a new, fairly new resident on Patriots Lane, um, very impressive, but he, um, is interested in serving the town, Donovan LaJoy. So I made up appointments for both of them, if you're interested.
To Joyce Bakshi and Donovan LaJo, is it LaHoy?
Ah, LaJoy, but I got your wrong, you know I'm bad with names.
The selectmen of the municipality of Acton, due in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as senior alternate planning board member for Joyce, and alternate planning board member for Donovan LaJoy, within and for the municipality of Acton until June thirtieth, twenty twenty, given under hand this thirtieth day of January two thousand eighteen.
Make a motion, we appoint Joyce Bakshi as the senior alterner, and Donovan LaVoy as the alternate planning board member.
My second, all in favor.
So I, I feel like I might've told you guys this, um, off the record, but because it, uh, make sure open the paper, I thought that I'd make sure that you were aware. So we had a situation with, um, a dog and a non-resident, um, an individual from Lebanon that lives on Godding Road, um, essentially right over the line, essentially, um, a few weeks back, his dogs got loose, the animal control officer received a call, and he went and picked up the animals, um, he put them on Facebook, and he put them on Facebook, he put some, um, some, you know, some information out there best he could, the dogs didn't have any collars or tags, they weren't microchipped, um, and after communicating with me in a short period of time going by, it was, um, it was late evening, it was, um, I instructed him to take the dogs to the, um, shelter, because that's, you know, we have a contract with them, and that's what we're supposed to do, so, he, um, loaded the dogs and started going to Kennybunk to drop the animals off, um, he got in, into the parking lot of the shelter, and the owner of the animals contacted him, and said that he had saw them on Facebook, and, um, you know, essentially they were his dogs, and, and, you know, he wanted to get them back, so that was great, um, so he called me again and asked me how that worked with the fees, and based on policy and the past practice, how it's always worked is that if, there's a fifty dollar impound fee for each dog, and the purpose of that is so that, um, the town, townspeople aren't paying for the mileage, the animal control officer is putting in for mileage to go down there and back, and they shouldn't have to pay that for somebody that doesn't have the dogs licensed or tagged, so because he was, if, if we pick up dogs and within, you know, ten or fifteen minutes, we can find owners, we get them on Facebook, and we, we don't charge the impound fee, but he had made it all the way to Kennybunk, so I made the decision that the individual should pay the, the impound fees, so, and Wayne has the authority, the animal control officer, to collect the fees at the, you know, at the site, so, anyways, he, um, essentially told the individual this over the phone, and told him that, um, you know, there was gonna be a fee and what it was gonna be, uh, the gentleman went so far as to ask him if he had changed for, for, um, you know, particular bills, and they agreed to meet at Ted's Fried Clams. So the animal control officer drove all the way back, um, and after a conversation and some, um, words shared, the gentleman took his dogs and sped off from Ted's Fried Clams. So, uh, the ECO called me again, and, um, you know, I had him call the sheriff's department, it wasn't up to him to chase down the individual, and, um, they've basically contacted us to make sure that, you know, we wanna follow through, they did summons him and, and give him the chance to come and just pay the fine and be done with it, um, but he's refusing, so the, um, sheriff's department is summoning him and taking him to court, um, middle of February, for theft of services from the town.
That sounds right to me.
Yeah, I agree.
That's where that is.
Register your dogs.
Yep.
Save all that trouble.
Yep.
Six bucks.
Or just pay the fee.
Or just pay the fee. Um, town debit card policy.
Okay, so this is, I, I told you that there was a bunch of policies that I wanted the treasurer to look over, uh, this was one of them, so the town debit card policy, um, basically the way that the policy reads down, and you're welcome to read it, um, is that we keep a minimum of twenty-five dollars in that account, and it's not until the, um, request comes in from the department head or whomever, um, that money is transferred, and it's not transferred unless this authorization for debit card use is filled out, we have signatures on it, you guys approved the five hundred dollar amount some time ago, um, she's requesting that the twenty-five dollar minimum in that account be able to go up to a hundred dollars, um, sometimes you have situations, um, I guess the best example would be with our neighbors helping neighbors, you know, if somebody walks in off the street and needs some assistance with something, um, we, I can do a lot with a twenty-five dollar minimum, and that's all that she can keep in the account unless we increase it. I mean, we still follow all of the protocols as far as getting signature and the money being in the account, but by keeping a little bit more in there, it will allow for emergencies to come up.
Yep, if I'm not mistaken, we kept a low dollar amount in there in case something happened either to the card or the number was compromised.
And still a hundred dollars is, right, there's no other, none of the other town accounts are tied to this one, so there's no, you know, um, and Michelle and I are the only ones that have the cards, we don't give them out, if other departments need things, we purchase them on their behalfs.
Yep.
So she circled her, um, changes, if you wanna look over that, we'll put it on for next week and see if you wanna, what you wanna do with it. And that's all I have.
All right, we will open up for public comment.
Dennis Long. Uh, I don't remember when it was, it was just a month or two ago, um, I brought up some information on Buzzle Road and I, and gave it to the selectmen, uh, in that packet is the deed, uh, to Buzzle Road, and the easement is written out very clearly in the deed, so, uh, I guess the Row Committee has done the research on this as of the last two minutes, so.
Okay.
Uh, we don't really need to do that, you guys have that information.
Okay.
Uh, and the other thing is, you asked Elise about the Buzzle Road, why it's laid out like it is, when, when Buzzle, uh, had the road put in from the red schoolhouse, uh, up to the farm, there was no road there at all, okay? And so they put that road in, and it, and when Swans put in that development down there along the lake, um, when they put that road in, that property, their deeds go through the road, okay? Uh, and the problem they had down in there that they never could figure out, even the lawyers, who owned the road, because, uh, Swans, AKA Smith family, uh, cuz that's what Julia was, was a swan, uh, they signed off all their rights to that, but it's still not decided who owns it, um, and the reason why Buzzle Road stops at the bottom of the hill, um, is because when they did the nine-one-one in town, uh, they stopped the Buzzle Road there, and they made Lakeside Drive go from there out to the H Road, so that was all one road, and that was all Lakeside Drive, so they changed that name of that section of road to Lakeside Drive when they did the nine-one-one thing, that's why it's like it is.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, moving on to announcements, February first, Planning Board hearing, public hearing, In accordance with Article Two, Section two point three of the Town of Acton subdivision regulations, the Acton Planning Board is scheduling a public hearing on Thursday, February first, at seven PM, to discuss a proposed amendment to the subdivision regulations as revised and adopted by the Acton Planning Board on September twentieth, two thousand Office Assistant Deadline is February second for, um, assist, Office Assistant to the Code Enforcement Land Use Department, should I read this whole thing again? Resumes with a cover letter and three references must be delivered to the town administrator no later than twelve o'clock on Friday, February second, you can mail or hand deliver it to the town at thirty-five H Road. Budget deadline is also this Friday, um, for the initial requests due from.